Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Operations Committee meeting of the Bi-State Development Agency Board of Commissioners to order Friday, January 28, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Win Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here. Here.
Looks like we might have lost Myra.
Yes.
So I'll just wait a minute and see what the issue is. I'm sure it'll get fixed promptly.
Did anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I thought it was me at first.
And Madam Chair, I will have to leave after the operations meeting. I did inform Myra.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Galladay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I show the boardroom on mute.
Oh, it is.
It is, but I don't think Myra was in the boardroom.
Oh.
One minute. Okay. Okay, we'll just start over. Commissioner Ringgill.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
There.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Costello. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gliding.
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to the public comment piece. And I would say that there I have a few remarks to make regarding the public comments that the Board of Commissioners has received recently. Because of the pandemic and an effort to keep the board and the public and staff safe, we've provided an opportunity for the public to provide public comment through the Bi-State website rather than making personal appearances. Since November 29, 2021, emailed public comments to the Bi-State Board have come in from 28 individuals, and some individuals have submitted more than one comment. Approximately 20 of the comments pertain to turnstiles and suggest that funds for this project should be spent on workforce development, increasing driver wages or hazard pay in order to increase or hire available drivers, which they feel would be improved frequency and reliability of the bus service. And we certainly, as a board, understand the public's concern about that. Safety and workforce development are two of the most important issues to Bi-State and to Metro. We are fortunate to have finances available to address both of these issues. Within the last week, staff has developed plans to improve starting wages with a pathway for team members to reach top pay within three years. The labor shortage is a national problem and impacts many, if not all, industries. Leadership teams continue to improve workforce solutions and improve existing team members, but also attract new talent. So we appreciate those comments. The board has also received several email comments related to mask compliance and safety questions about bus stop locations, as well as specific service complaints because of changes in bus service. And staff who are equipped to address these issues will be following up in the next few weeks and informing the board of resolutions to these issues. And finally, the public can be assured that the Bi-State Board of Commissioners receives and reviews all of these valuable public comments about policy and investment decisions as part of our meeting presentations. Although the board does rely on staff to assist with comments related to service and operations, the board also follows up and reviews the outcomes of these comments as well. The board appreciates and takes seriously the emailed comments from the public. We look forward to the day when we can resume in-person meetings and the board's personal contact with the public. As has been past practice, public comments received have been included in today's meeting materials and will be included in the minutes from today's meeting. So thanks to all who made comments, and hopefully we'll be able to follow up and provide resolutions in the coming weeks. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Operations Committee open meeting from October 15, 2021. The minutes have been provided to the committee for review. Do I have a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is an agreement between the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and Bi-State Development. And I would ask CEO Talby Roach for comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this item in front of you is one of the many public support payments that we get, and it's necessary to be in front of the Board of Commissioners, which is the case whenever we have an intergovernmental agreement. So you note, although it's a very small-cost item, it is critical to our operating, and because of the technical legal reasons, we do have to put it in front of you for approval. This, of course, is support for senior services, mostly oriented towards Calla Ride, which is our on-demand in Missouri. And of course, this is a critical funding component. But I want to stay brief today, as we have a full agenda, and just want to be sure there's not any questions. So I do ask for your approval of this item.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next item is the sole-source contract authorization for professional engineering services, Phase 2, the engineering and design support services rehab of the MetroLink cross-county extension tunnels and stations. And I believe Chris Paylor is going to inform us about this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. This paper seeks approval of a sole-source contract with Gall Zeidler for the design services associated with the repairs to the cross-county tunnels, preparing or repairing leakage, as well as some damage that has occurred. In April of last year, the board approved a contract with Gall Zeidler to do an assessment of the tunnels. Those assessments have been completed, and we used the final report to help guide us in preparing the scope for design services. That scope's been prepared, and we have negotiated the contract with Gall Zeidler to perform these design services. That amount of contract is just over $369,000, and that includes a 10% contingency. Are there any questions?
Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number seven is a contract modification with WSP for MetroLink station enhancements. And again, I think Chris is going to talk about this.
Yes, thank you. This paper seeks a modification to the WSP contract. WSP was hired originally to look at five stations for enhancements and upgrades. Network has been completed, and they've taken them through advanced conceptual engineering, which is about 20% plans. This paper and this contract modification would take two of the stations, Eighth and Pine Convention Center, from 20% to 100% design, and we're working on identifying the funding to complete the various components of that work once the design is complete. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, the total contract value is just over $1.7 million, and that includes a 10% contingency.
Thanks, Chris.
Are these designs in line with what we're going to be doing, hopefully, here in the near future with the turnstiles and stuff, or?
Yes, we'll be incorporating. WSP is involved with the turnstile project as well, so they're aware of those improvements. So they'll be incorporating any improvements that we'll be making with the turnstile project and with these designs as well.
And I'm just curious, in their study, did they ever mention that that would be a good idea to have turnstiles in the WSP study?
That wasn't in the scope of this original enhancement. It was beyond, it was really just upgrading the stations and looking at different passenger flows. But no, it wasn't in their scope to look at that type of thing.
Right.
Commissioner, just to note, in the white paper, it's referenced as access control. So just to distinguish where you would see it, yes. And it is within the white paper, if you want to take a look at it. So it's definitely incorporated. And yes, the whole engineering team very much knows about it.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, double-spending, you know, where we redesigned, then we redesigned again, you know, that it was part of the plan.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
Removed.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is the Skinker Bridge rehabilitation project, contract time extension. Chris, can you tell us about this, please?
I can. Thank you. Skinker Bridge is in fair condition overall. Does require some rehabilitation. STV Engineering Firm was hired to design that work, includes primarily bearing replacement, as well as painting and coating some of the members and doing some other structural repairs. That design work's been completed. The design took a little longer than anticipated, primarily due to COVID. They had some travel restrictions for several months during the early part of the design. But again, the design's completed, was bid out, contractor's been selected, and network is actually starting now. STV contract is expiring, so we want to extend their contract through the end of constructions. They can provide construction design support services throughout the construction phase. It's a no-cost, just a time extension, taking them out to the end of October, so they'll be available for us if we need them during the construction of the project. Are there any questions?
Just one, Chris. Is this going to really solve the issue of the water in the tunnel?
Sorry, this is the Skinker Bridge, the MetroLink Bridge over Skinker.
All right, sorry, it's not the tunnel. I probably should have asked that on the tunnel issue.
I can answer that question if you like. So the tunnel repairs look at several different things. Obviously, they're going to repair some of the areas that've shown a lot of damage. And what they're trying to do is route the water. So, you know, the water's out there. We're not going to be able to completely redo the tunnel waterproofing that's buried in the tunnel. We're trying to route the water and collect it in certain areas so it doesn't cause any more damage to the tunnel and just kind of minimize the impact. So the water will still be coming through, but we're able to catch it all and put it into the underdrains and then the pumps and pump it out.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So back to the Skinker Bridge rehab. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The East River Stair Replacement Project. I think this is Chris as well.
This project is to replace the two sets of stairs at the East Riverfront platform. It's been the construction contract was given to Harlan. They're working on some design elements of their contracts. We've held them off from starting because the replacement of these stairs is obviously going to require removing the existing stairs. We did not want to remove the existing stairs until work on the elevators was complete. We'd gone through rehabilitation on the elevators. So that work is done now. So we're ready to get started on actually on the actual work of the stairs. Unfortunately, the elevator's taking a little longer than we anticipated, so we needed to extend this contract out. It's going to be a no-cost time extension to Harlan, taking them out to the end of October 2022. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Go ahead.
I was just asking, how much?
Overall contract's around $700,000.
And what did we ever do on the elevators there? I know we had some major issues, and they were down. Did we ever recoup any of our losses on the repairs of them?
I can't speak to the specifics on that. It's not in my area. I know we were back and forth with the contractor quite a bit and had them come back and continually maintain and complete their work scope, but I wasn't intimately involved in that. That's more of a maintenance issue. Sorry.
Mr. Roach, have you had any updates on that?
On the recovery of costs, I do not. But so I will ask Darren Currie to give a specific report on that, Commissioner. I'm happy to do so. But I do know that one of the discoveries that Mr. Currie found was, for instance, we had, the elevators were going down because of, they kept getting what's called a fire light, so having to do with temperature. And what we found was that there was a design difficulty that was associated with, there's some heaters that are embedded into the elevator core, and they were, and they're there, obviously, to keep the materials from freezing, and they were improperly located and therefore setting off the fire alarms, which then sets the default and was causing many of our problems at that elevator. I'm grateful that the team found the flaw, but Commissioner Simmons is right. I would consider it a design flaw and something that we may recoup some costs on. And so I'll ask Mr. Currie to give us a specific briefing on that issue. So if I may, I'd like to follow up on an email, Commissioner, if that's acceptable.
All right, thank you. And what type of timeframe are we talking about on the stair removal and replacement?
This contract modification will extend it out to the end of October.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none may have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the sole-source contract authorization for replacement of the MetroLink SCADA system. And I think this is Tom Curran.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I am presenting a request for authorization to negotiate and enter into a contract with Collins Aerospace to replace a supervisory control and automated data acquisition or SCADA system for MetroLink. The SCADA system is MetroLink centralized train control, and Collins Aerospace is the original equipment manufacturer of the system. It's sole distributor. And the SCADA system monitors, controls, records, and displays information for safety critical functions such as door access, the signal systems, crossing gates, power distribution, tunnel ventilation, vehicle location. And due to the age of our current SCADA system and changes in technology, it cannot be expanded to accommodate the data needs and signal requirements for the Mid-America Airport Extension in St. Clair County. So we're requesting authorization to enter into a sole-source contract with Collins Aerospace. For a new SCADA system, the cost is projected to be $4,560,998. That includes a 20% contingency. Funding for the project will be from Section 5307 and 5337 federal funds plus local funds. And so staff is recommending that the Operations Committee recommend for the Board of Commissioners to allow for Bi-State to enter into a sole-source contract not to exceed $4,560,998 with Collins Aerospace for an upgrade and replacement of the MetroLink SCADA system. If you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I just have one comment, Tom. I read this with a lot of care because it's a large sole-source contract. And I was happy to know that, or to see that, it's really based on the fact that there are a series of criteria that have to be met for this kind of a sole-source contract, including particular expertise and other things. So under normal circumstances, I don't think we would be providing this kind of a large sole-source contract unless there was extenuating circumstances. So I'm glad that the staff is comfortable with it, and just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Commissioner. We did meet last month, and we felt that it met all the criteria for restricted data rights, avoiding duplication of costs and unacceptable delays. And so we thought it fit well with the FTA criteria for sole source.
Great. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 11 is the contract award bus and van inspection services. And again, we'll turn to Tom Curran for comments.
Thank you. A metro is required to conduct vehicle inspections and auditing to ensure compliance with federal Buy America requirements. And so a solicitation was issued on June 14th for these services. We had two proposals received, one from First Transit and the second from TRC Engineering Services. The proposals were forwarded to an evaluation team and were scored. And based on the consensus scoring, First Transit was determined to be the highest-ranking firm. This contract will be 100% covered through operational funds, and management is recommending that Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval request to enter into a five-year contract with First Transit for bus and van inspection services in an amount not to exceed $551,338. If you have any, answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 12 is a contract award for heavy-duty transit buses. And again, this is Tom Curran.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this next contract award, as you said, is for heavy-duty transit buses. Our anticipated replacement schedule is an average of 30 buses per year. So our current fleet of 383 buses and 56 in reserve is 94% diesel buses and 6% battery electric-powered buses. And we issued a solicitation for heavy-duty transit buses on June 21st. And the request for proposals was advertised on Bi-State's iSupply portal, and also all FTA-approved large bus manufacturers were solicited. So we received proposals from two manufacturers, Gilligan Corporation and First Transit. Metro utilized FTA's best-value source selection methodology for the selection, which lists the selection criteria and the relative order of importance. The table in your package shows a consensus cost and technical scores, and Gilligan Corporation is the highest-ranking firm. The consensus technical scores for Gilligan were over twice the number for First Transit. The contract will be funded through FTA Section 5307 formula funding and C-MAC grants. Proposition M and St. Clair County Transit District will provide local match participation. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee forward to the Board of Commissioners an approval for President and CEO to enter into a five-year contract with Gilligan Corporation to supply these buses in a not-to-exceed amount of $122,197,743. If you have any, answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Tom, are the, I'm sorry, are these, what is the fuel for these? Are these electric? Are they fuel-driven?
This will be, this will be both. We've advertised for both, so it's a combo.
And it's 30 buses, correct?
It's an average of 30 per year. It is an indefinite quantity contract. It will depend on our needs and production. But our average replacement is 30 vehicles per year.
So the $122 million, is that going to, maybe I'm being specific, is that going to buy us 30 buses?
It would buy us 150 buses.
Oh, okay.
So in other words, this is a five-year contract, and others on the call may want to jump into this, but it's, that's the annual bus amount. So looking at about 150 buses over a five-year period.
Thank you.
So Commissioner, just for fleet integrity, and this is, Darren Currie, of course, can speak on this much more, on a much more detailed basis. But basically, we schedule buses over a period of time, so especially that they don't all come up, the clock doesn't run out on them at any one time. And so as part of fleet continuity, the idea is to schedule it over a period of time. And obviously, therefore, the five-year contract additionally, unfortunately, sometimes buses get into accidents and so on. So there is some flexibility that we do need to leave into the contract. And also, we wanted to see what are the performance results associated with our current electric program, which, by the way, so far, excuse me, is very positive. And so we want to be sure that they can fulfill the performance requirements, and that'll allow us, at least in this contract, to continue to electrify portions of the fleet that are appropriate.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Aunt Rose, you asked mine, but I guess my other question would be, like in, you know, the other, in the automobile industry and stuff, is it taking longer to get to buses now, or are they pretty much on time?
If Darren Currie may be able to answer that question better than I, Darren, if he's available, I believe, I've not heard that we have a delay necessarily, but I'm not the best person to answer that question. I'd be happy to follow up later with you.
Do we have Darren in the waiting room? Apparently not. Okay. So I will, I'll handle that, not as well as Darren. But yes, we do have a delay. Most of those delays, Commissioner, are actually with a Calla Ride fleet, which is, you know, those are a little more oriented towards the traditional auto fleet. We have a significant delay on Calla Ride, both in Missouri and Illinois. I know Ken Sharkey in St. Clair County is struggling to get fleet requirements for ATS in Illinois as well. So it's no stranger. So that's mostly where most of our pressure is. We did see a little bit of a delay associated with what you're talking about, Commissioner Cox, with the delivery of some of the electrics. You may remember that the 40-foot Gilligan's actually came in a little bit later. That was a combination of the supply problems and actually the fires that they had in California because they did shut down the manufacturing facility for a time. So I know we're trying to be very vigilant about this and get these orders in the queue because there's a long lead time towards manufacturing. But right now, we are okay as far as fleet is concerned.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item 13 on the agenda is the letter of agreement between Bi-State Development and the Jerry Costello LLC for consulting services for the St. Louis Regional Freightway and Bi-State Development. And I would ask Mayor Lamy for comments.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning to all. We are requesting
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning to all. We are requesting approval and referral to the Board of Commissioners a letter of agreement between ByState Development and the Jerry Costello Group. Former Congressman Jerry Costello is the lead person for this contract. Since 2015, the Costello Group has provided services for the freightway and ByState Development under three previous contracts. They will provide strategic advice and planning for the freightway, ByState Development, and will work closely with the ByState Development executive staff. They will coordinate activities with the U.S. Secretary of Transportation and its office, as well as members of the U.S. Congress and other government officials in the St. Louis region and the Class One railroads. The agreement provides services at the same rate of nine thousand dollars per month for twenty-four months. For funding, the contract will be split between the Freightway's operating budget and ByState Development's executive services. Late yesterday afternoon, we provided a list of accomplishments from the Costello Group. Are there any questions?
Was that an addition to the board book?
Myra, can you help me out with that?
Yes, it was, and it's at the end of the agenda. Commissioner Win Miller, please accept my apologies on it. I, I had meant to get that earlier into the book. But we just listed many of the assignments that we are using with, with this lobbyist specifically, which I think is a reasonable request. And so I asked to put that in, and we put it in electronically yesterday. So it is at the end of your board packet specifically?
Yeah, I, I see it now, and I appreciate that because I was actually gonna ask Mary. Because I remember when we talked about this, the contract coming up either last year or the year before, I said that it would be a good idea to have some kind of a legislative report or lobbying report from them that indicated what they had done over the course of the contract. So I see the information. In the future, if we can get that a little earlier or even maybe on a quarterly basis, I would ask that you think about that. Otherwise, we don't. And I'm happy to have it from, from Mary, but I just feel like if we have a lobbying contract, we need to know on a fairly regular basis what the benchmarks and outcomes are.
Agreed. Please, please let me accept responsibility for that, Chair Win Miller. I should have had it to you earlier, and please accept my apologies. Very reasonable. And I will try to get that to you sooner.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none may have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is, is there any unscheduled business?
No, Chair, there is none.
So I would turn to you for an operations report for, from you and from Mr. Stewart.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning. So you have an extensive operations report here, and there is obviously an extensive list on capital projects, which has also been included. Really, the highlights of that list mostly has to do with the LRV replacement, which, of course, is a major project for this institution. So I'd like to highlight that just briefly. Of course, we have eighty-seven light rail vehicles, of which roughly, many of which have, have reached their economic life. But what we have been doing is doing major renovations, and the team has done an excellent job with cutting-edge maintenance. However, roughly a third of the fleet should be looked at for replacement, and that, of course, is scheduled, and there's significant detail in there. What we have done, and this is standard practice, is we have hired a specialized engineering consultant on these details, LTK Engineering. And they are looking at and working with the manufacturing community about, A, the specifics of our, of our equipment. And we, and we have a commitment to several of our partners to look at some design modifications, looking at some efficiency. One of which is looking at, you know, instead of a two-car train consist, at least looking at the possibility of a single-car consist. So we're looking at all those issues. That certainly is the biggest of our major capital updates there. You'll see several others. I think they're well detailed in your packet. And I do want to pause in case there's any specific questions about those or if, or if there is a desire to go into a significant amount of detail. The LRVs are followed by significant contracts for bus replacement and Coleride van replacement. And of course, there's a couple of projects that I do want to talk about in Illinois. In Illinois, of course, we have a slight hybrid relationship because that has to do with a very strong partnership we have with St. Clair County. St. Clair County Transit District is specifically involved in a lot of these. And, and a lot of these fundamental ideas are actually championed by the Transit District. This continues to be a strong partnership. And I just wanted to note that that partnership has been fruitful in moving forward on several of these projects. So I want to pause since we have obviously six pages of, of capital projects that are noted. There, it's a very important update. But before we go to the operations ridership numbers with, with Mr. Stewart, I want to pause and be sure that there's not any particular detail that any commissioner wants to hear in the packet. Okay. Hearing no comment. So I want to move to Chuck Stewart. Chuck, if you could, walk us through the fundamental ridership numbers, which just for reference sake is at the end of your packet. There's a three-page narrative there on comparison of our ridership. And Chuck, could you take it away, please?
Thank you, Talby. Good morning, Commissioners. Talby had me jump right into this. As you know, I am interim Executive Director of Metro Transit now. This is my third day, and it's been, it's gonna be an experience. But I've been before you over the last ten years in various capacities at ByState, and I am looking forward to this opportunity. I appreciate the faith and trust that Talby has put in me to, to perform this duty and as well as the, the Board of Commissioners. And I look forward to your support as we move forward. Going to be brief about the, the performance stats. As you can see, our ridership is up compared to last year, about two point six percent in Metro Bus. MetroLink is up fourteen percent, and Coleride is down thirteen percent. I think the key issue that we need to talk about this time, that we need to address, the elephant in the room, continues to be our operator shortages. Basically, we cannot provide the services that the region deserves and expects unless we have enough operators in order to do that. As you know, we did a service change in November. We reduced our service by approximately ten percent. There is an immediate impact to that. We are, our missed trips reduced from two, to two percent from roughly six percent. So that was a significant increase, a direct impact of that. But our problems in terms of operator shortages continue. As you can see in the stats, we missed over ten thousand trips on Coleride. And as you know, we're doing a number of things in order to fix this situation. We're doing bonuses. You're aware of our sign-on bonus program. We did appreciation bonuses in order to retain the teams that we have. We're doing referral bonuses so that our teams can help us to bring in other team members. And we're doing job fairs, those kind of things. But one of the most significant things that we did recently is that we reached an MOU with our seven-eighty-eight union in order to increase starting wages. So we're hopeful that that will have an additional impact as we move forward. So we continue to monitor this situation, and we are still considering that we may need additional service changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We're going to more detail on any specific items.
Got a couple related to Mr. Stewart, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new capacity. A couple of questions. One, if you could give us a little bit more, more detail on the status of the operator shortage. I know previously we'd asked, you know, for some periodic updates on kind of how many people are in the pipeline. I think that gives the board a good, a good sense, not speaking for everybody, but speaking, but being able to say, you know, do we need more resources as far as wages, as far as dropping the bonus? Because I think the short, the operator shortage is the biggest thing we have now. And two, if you can go into a little bit more detail, you know, if it's confidential, we can talk about it later, a little bit more detail in that plan to raise the wages specifically for the, for the initial hires to the new hires, the operators. Because I think as Chair Win Miller discussed, that was something that was pretty heavily discussed in the public comments that we needed, that we needed to do that. There's a lot of public concern over that that I frankly share. So I'm excited to hear that there is an MOU. I'd like a little bit more detail on that, if you can provide it. And then detail on kind of where the, where we are in the pipeline, how many people we have in the pipeline, how that's all looking as far as fixing that shortage. So thank you.
So Commissioner, I don't have the specific pipeline numbers in front of me. Jessica.
Yep. Thank you. I'm sorry, we're, we're tag-teaming a little bit, Commissioner, so please thank you for that, for your patience there. So some good news is that we have in an existing class of twenty-one qualified individuals in training. And of course, that's very helpful. But of course, and one, one thing that I do want to talk statistically is the Omicron effects have been, of course, coming at the wrong time. And as a matter of fact, our last report, January, will unquestionably be our highest month of positives. As a matter of fact, the number was at one hundred and sixty-two. So many more than double of our prior, prior heavy months. So unfortunately, what's happening is we essentially have a hole in our bucket, and that's caused by Omicron right now. However, I got that number directly from Ternice Winters, as a matter of fact, and she's hopeful about that we are getting good quality candidates in that training pool. We could use some break from Omicron, and of course, the MOU and the increase in wages is a key component. Chuck, if you can continue.
Okay. So I have the numbers, Commissioner, on the MOU. So basically, we were focused on our Coleride operators and our bus operators and a couple of different maintenance positions. But for Metro Bus operators, the starting wage was increased from fifteen eighty-eight to eighteen fifty-three. The starting wage at Coleride was increased from sixteen forty-two to seventeen thirty-three. And our, we had two mechanics classes. The Class Ten Fuel Oil Attendants went from fourteen eighty-one to sixteen ninety-two. And Class A Bus Maintenance went from sixteen twenty-six to eighteen fifty-nine. So we are implementing those changes as we speak, and we're looking forward to that having a positive impact on our ability to, to recruit people and bring them onboard.
Thank you for your answer, Mr. Stewart. Thank you and your team and everybody on the team for working on that MOU. And I think using our resources in the right way, and that includes our partners, seven-eighty-eight. So this is, I think that's good news. And certainly happy for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, as I said the other day, congratulations to your new position there, and I'm looking forward to working with you. And just on a side note there, I'm being told that the Illinois Bus Garage is staffed pretty adequate at this time. I don't know if that's information to be looking at, and that our ATS system is not missing any rides, so that's really good news.
And that is true, Commissioner. We are having far more problems on the Missouri side than the Illinois side.
Well, then we just need to expand that over that way then.
Absolutely.
And I know under your, under your leadership, we'll get that done.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What is the reason for the difference between the, the two states in terms of staffing?
You know, I'm not sure I know why, Commissioner. But I can, you know, we can, is, is there a reason for that that you're aware of, Jessica? Or I thought we were gonna have Virgie on with us also.
I believe it has something to do with the, just the share of service. So, you know, it's about twenty percent miles an hour coming from Illinois, so it's just maybe a more manageable amount of service to handle. But yeah, beyond that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have.
And our larger, our larger bus garages are in Missouri. So, so we got more service coming out of Missouri in general.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything particular to Missouri that was creating an issue for you. So it's really just the...
Just volume, just size.
The volume of the service. Great. Thank you.
This question, I guess, is more towards Talby. Where's the additional funding coming from for, for the raises and stuff? We got all that figured out?
Yes, we do. We were able to work within the existing budget resources, and we did come to the, to the board for the specific approval. But yes, we have been working through a combination of also the federal funding associated with, with CARES, CRISA ARP, using those specifically in, in labor areas, and then trying to create some other efficiencies on the other side is also part of the effort. What would really help us from a cost standpoint, Commissioner, is if we get, if we get more employees. Quite frankly, it is very fair to, to characterize our workforce as they're working double-overs on their regular days off. They are really out there still moving the greater St. Louis area. And our, our biggest opportunity for cost savings would be to move our employment numbers up, seven-eighty-eight. Our partners have done a tremendous job. And please, if you see operators out there, this also includes the IBW working hard and maintenance and so on. So it's actually a very, very good point. But, but where maybe we would have some opportunity for savings is if we include, increase our employment pools. Yes, increase our, increase our wage rates, but then maybe pull down a little bit on our overtime, which would maybe make our jobs a little bit easier to, to handle right now in this difficult time.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much to the team for everything you're doing, and hopefully, better days are ahead when it comes to ridership and, you know, being able to hold on and increase our workforce and everything else. So I'm hopeful. I think the next item on the, the agenda is a report from the President.
Very good. Good morning. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to move quickly, but I have a couple of important updates. First of all, a lot of this is timing. I wanted you all to see Chuck Stewart. And of course, please welcome Chuck. He is a tremendous seasoned professional and someone with vigilant commitment to the vision of one BSD. It almost goes without saying that Chuck's principles and focus on accountability, diversity, equity, inclusion are the kind of leadership that we need here at ByState. I, I find Chuck among the highest professionals that I have ever worked with. I'm really looking forward to his leadership, and I, and I, please help me in welcoming him and moving him into this very important leadership position. Very much looking forward to it. Welcome, Chuck, and, and keep held on, Chuck. That's one thing I gotta tell you. I, I mentioned a little bit of the Omicron effects, so I'm going to skip that, except for we do have a job fair tomorrow. That is in the Orlando Gardens in Maryland Heights. We are having job fairs, as a matter of fact, every month on a Saturday, and the next one will be February the twelfth. These are really quality jobs. I think you heard some of the pay rates. We have people who have careers. We have people who have careers, um, and, and they should be recognized for that. And it's a really tremendous opportunity to, uh, have a good career. Live in the neighborhoods of Missouri and Illinois. You know, these are your neighbors. Uh, I, I cannot go without a quick update on our operator Jonathan Cobb, who continues to improve, albeit with some minor setbacks. He is in a rehab facility in the Chicago area. And I just cannot, I am in fact compelled to tell you that Ternice Winters texted me and, and, uh, Ternice is the director of Metro Bus. She invited Jonathan to one of her team's meetings. 50 individuals, mostly service area managers, TSMs. Jonathan appeared at that meeting in a Zoom appearance. Let me tell you, there was not a dry eye in the room. Um, Jonathan is doing tremendously well, albeit with a real challenge. But please, if you happen to recognize our employees who are out there doing this tremendous work, we still have that connection to Jonathan. That's going to be a rigorous, and we want to not only support the Cobb family, but also support the Metro family who is moving through this and, uh, really an incredible, uh, day. Um, also I just want to, uh, mention the tremendous success of these kinds of partnerships that we have both in Missouri and Illinois. I had the pleasure of, of, um, ho- of hosting Governor JB Pritzker in the Illinois Garage. A huge victory. Really coming out of St. Clair County and the tremendous work of St. Clair County Transit District, getting, um, a grant for $9.8 million to work on the Emerson project, Emerson Park project. This is a cutting edge building that was able to garner, um, state funds. The work from Ken Sharkey and the Transit District, of course Herb Simmons, tremendous, uh, these are the kind of partnerships that get projects funded. And we'll be building, actually St. Clair County will be building, will simply be in support of a tremendous building in East St. Louis directly on our line. Uh, I just want to offer our congratulations there. Uh, Commissioner Cox, you asked specifically for me to just give a quick update on secure platform plan. That project is going well. Um, uh, however, uh, since we have several legal documents that are being worked on right now, um, I cannot comment very, on a very detailed basis publicly. I can't say however, that nearly 90% of our private sector dollars have been committed. Uh, we are working through those, uh, legal documents right now. It is very, very good news. I would expect to probably put us in a design circumstance in February of this year. And then also solidify our arrangements with our funding partners in the city, county, and of course St. Clair County. So I want to be quick and brief and, uh, to the point, uh, since we have such a full schedule, I really appreciate everybody's time. And I hope these updates were to your satisfaction. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Talby. Any questions or comments for him? Seeing none, I would ask Myra to give us the dates for our future meetings.
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February 18th. The next safety and security meeting will be held on Thursday, March 10th. And the next operations audit, finance and administration meetings will be held on Friday, March 18th, all beginning at 8:30 AM.
Thank you. I need a motion for the committee to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal confidential and privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal, D7 Purchasing and Contracts. May I have a motion please?
So move.
Second.
Can you call the roll please Myra?
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. You all in a few minutes. Thank you. I'm going to reconvene, uh, to open session, the Operations Committee meeting of the ByState Board on Friday, January 28th. Do I have a motion to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval, an authorization for the President and CEO to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the construction of the engine run-up at the St. Louis Downtown Airport?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, there's no further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Operations Committee meeting?
So.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Morning everyone. I'd like to call the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meeting of the ByState Board of Commissioners to, to order on Friday, January 28th, 2022. Um, and we have a roll call vote please.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Uh, present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Brown.
There.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Thank you. Myra, were there any, uh, public comment cards received for the meeting?
No, for this meeting, no speaker cards were submitted.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October 15th, 2021, um, AFA Committee Open Meeting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement between ByState Development and Regional Justice Information Services. And Tom Curran is going to provide comments.
Thank you. We are seeking approval of an intergovernmental agreement between ByState Development and Regis for data center and infrastructure support services. The Regis Commission is a government entity created to provide IT products and services to criminal justice and government agencies. We've had a relationship with them since 2011. Our most recent contract ended at the end of last year and we're on an extension currently. Both ByState and Regis want to continue this beneficial relationship. It's key to our IT needs. Our primary data center is located at Regis, which provides staffing 24 hours a day, 355 days a year. Regis staff work onsite at ByState in conjunction with our own IT staff. They provide support including help desk, desktop application and infrastructure support specialist. And more recently ByState has worked with Regis to share a chief information security liaison to create cybersecurity plans to protect our systems and data. So this agreement with Regis removes the burden of ByState trying to recruit and hire specialized IT personnel. The proposed agreement would reflect onsite staffing. It would vary between 10 and 14 people depending on our needs. And the annual cost for this agreement is between 1.1 and 1.7 million dollars annually. Uh, depending on what our needs are for a base period of 36 months with four additional optional renewal periods through 2029. Funding is provided through ByState's operating budget. So staff is recommending that the Audit, Finance and Administration Commission, Commission forward to the Board of Commissioners, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between ByState and Regis effective February 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. Item number six is the IAD Audit Follow-Up Summary for the second quarter of fiscal year 2022. And Crystal Messner will be providing us with information.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, we're sick of time since 6 through 9 are informational. Just keeping with the spirit of our last meetings. I'll kind of go through all of those. Uh, stop me at any time if you have any questions or comments. Um, so for the second quarter of fiscal year 2022, for our internal audit follow-ups, uh, we had 118 recommendations. 69 of those have been completed and closed out. We have 31 that remain open. And within this next, uh, quarter, we will be focusing on following up on the 18 that are overdue right now. Item number seven is our second quarter FY 2022 Just Internal Audit Status Report. Uh, our internal audit plan is going as expected. Uh, we have had to adjust a little bit, uh, but we are moving forward and replacing audits with higher risk needs. For item number eight, that is our internal audit, safety and security oversight audits that we perform annually. These run on a three-year basis. So we are, this is for the first year of that three-year term. Uh, for this fourth quarter, which was closing out calendar year 2021, I'm happy to report we had six items on there and we successfully closed those out. Uh, we were able to complete, finish and get consensus on our audit report, uh, as of December 15th. Um, and get that to the executive, um, the ESC, SSC, uh, Committee for Approval. That has been submitted to the ByState Safety and Security Oversight, the Mo dot and I dot side. For now, item number nine, which is our Treasury Safekeeping, uh, we do perform this on a quarterly basis. Uh, one of the things that we were trying to do for this quarter and for future quarters was to really bring a little bit more to this review than what we have been doing previously. So we worked with our CFO Tammy Fulbright in our Treasury Department to really get a little bit more behind this. And the reason I want to kind of go into this a little bit more is because this is a significant difference from what we were doing in the past. In the past, we were only looking at about $38 million for verification. Um, and that was due to a request of the board several years ago, probably over a decade ago. Um, and then, uh, we just kind of continued reviewing that, those particular items. Um, since I've been here and Tammy has been in her seat, we have really been trying to make our audits and our finance, you know, department working, uh, well together, but doing impactful things. Um, so we decided to go ahead and include, uh, the $425 million uh, of cash and investments from that quarterly treasury report. That's item number 13 on this agenda today. And really look at everything in there. So I'm happy to report that we were, um, able to say that it did fairly represent the net real, uh, realizable values for BSD cash and investments as of September 30th, 2021. Uh, in the future for these, we are going to incorporate fuel hedging. And then also, um, some verification of interest yield in percentage terms. Does anyone have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks very much Crystal. Appreciate and appreciate the information and also that you're working so closely with Tammy to make sure that we're doing what we need to do in terms of our, uh, expanding some of our audit function. The next item is, uh, information also, information only also, and it's, I'd asked Chuck Stewart for comments and it's about our 401K plan audit update.
Uh, you have in your packet a copy of our audit of the 401K as of December 31, 2020. Um, I am pleased to report that, um, and, um, unmodified audit opinion has been issued on this report. Uh, there is nothing else, uh, extraordinary about it. Um, that's consistent with our, our, our results over the last 10 years. So, um, I'm pleased to report that. And if there are any additional questions about that, I would be glad to answer those.
Any questions? Seeing none, you can go ahead and move forward Chuck on the 2021 pension valuations update.
Okay, very good. You also have in your packets the, uh, valuation reports for our pension plans, the salary pension plan as of June 1, 2021, IBW as of, uh, April 1, 2021, and ATU as of April 1, 2021. For the salary plan, we are currently at 83.3% funded. Uh, we have an unfunded liability of 18.1 million dollars. Our funding, uh, percentage actually went down from, uh, last year 85.6 to 83.3. Uh, that's a result of a couple of things. One is that we changed our, uh, rate of return assumption from 7% to 6%, uh, which was recommended to us by our actuaries. Uh, the other was our hero program where we, we had, uh, 50 people to retire under that program. But the, the fund is going very, very well. Um, we are being, um, certainly the, the major contribution has been our investments over the last couple of years. Our actual rate of return on our investments last year was 29.8%. So that is, that's extraordinary. And hopefully it will continue for a long time. Um, as it relates to our IBW plan, we're currently at 8.5%, 8.55. We have an unfunded liability of 1.1 million. As you can see, this is a very, this is a much smaller plan. Uh, only 35 active participants at this time. We closed this fund of, to new participants in 2014. So we're kind of at the runoff stage of that. Uh, we also, um, decreased our actuarial rate of return to 6% here. Um, we had actually received, um, achieved 100% funding in November 2020. So since then, the extra contributions were, um, were no longer taken. So we went from 96.4 last year to 85.5. But we continue to work with our IBW, uh, partners in keeping this a very healthy fund as we move forward. Last but not least is our 788, uh, ATU plan currently funded at 70.6%, which is the highest percentage funding since I've been around here, uh, for the last 10 years. Again, that is attributable to the, um, the returns in our investments. Uh, we continue to discuss, uh, changes to this fund. Uh, this is our only fund that is, that our only pension fund that is still open and active. So we're still getting new members. Uh, we plan to have discussions, uh, with 78, 788, uh, leadership, uh, in our upcoming negotiations about changes that we could possibly make to this, uh, fund going forward. Uh, with that, uh, are there any questions that I may entertain?
Is the, um, is the IBW fund, is that a defined benefit as well?
Yes, it is. It is. These are all defined benefit plans. Yes.
And I knew 788 was just one of them. Uh, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you for the information Chuck. Sounds like things are going relatively well.
They are. They are.
Uh, that was for information only. So the next item, um, um, is from Tammy Fulbright, information only financial statements.
Morning. If it'd be okay, I'd like to combine 12 and 13 also. It'll be the financial statements and the treasures report. Thank you. Um, the first quarter of '22, we had the opportunity to apply for additional federal stimulus funds. And with that, um, one of the requirements was that we, um, pull our 90% of our CARES funding. So we went ahead and pulled those funds in. We knew that we were going to finish using, um, about that amount in '22. And so that allows us to at least apply and see if we can get some of those additional funds. The result of that is that the combined income before depreciation is 53. The result of that is that the combined income before depreciation is 53 million, and that consists of the transit metro of 54.2 million. Riverfront Attractions was up 425,000, and this was a big increase from the first quarter of last year. That was primarily due to an increase in cruises. So they increased from the first quarter of last year to this year, they doubled. So they went from 266 to 552, and their passengers increased from about 15,000 to 58,000. These were offset by losses before depreciation. The Gateway Arch had a loss of about 440,000, and that was primarily due to fees related to the refunding of the arch debt there. We had to take that expense in this year, so that is, will be offset in upcoming months. The airport was also down 302,000, and that was due to additional incurred losses that were recognized as a result of a fire that happened in a maintenance building in prior years. As far as cash and investments, our ByState-directed funds were 226 million, and our ByState trustee-directed funds were 58 million, earning about a little under 1%. So primarily, our rate of return on our self-directed funds, we've been struggling with. The market hasn't been good, but as the Fed is expected to increase rates in March, we expect to start investing more back into a three-year ladder portfolio. And as far as the fuel hedge, we are currently, our per gallon amount is $1.49, budgeted $1.74, so we've realized gains of about 750,000. And that's my report this morning, if there's any questions.
Any questions for Tammy? Hearing none, since you combined your financial and your Treasurers' report, I think we can move on to the procurement report. Tom Curran?
Thank you. For the second quarter of fiscal year 2022, our non-competitive procurements totaled just shy of $1.7 million, or about 10.2% of the total purchase order commitment, which was 16.5 million during that period. Over the past 12 months, non-competitive procurements totaled 13.6 million, or 14.4% of the total purchase order volume of 94.5 million. We're always interested in keeping that number as low as we can. Also included in your information is procurement card activity for the first quarter of fiscal year 2022. There were 3,623 transactions made using procurement cards for a total value of 1.35 million. That makes the average cost for procurement card purchases during the first quarter about $372. There were no procedural violations found for any transactions in this quarter. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Talby, is there any unscheduled business?
There is none.
And you have a President's Report for the Audit Committee?
I just have one very quick comment, and I would please note, the professionalism and working together of two professionals you've heard from today. It is unprecedented to have your CFO and Chief Audit Executive to be working together in this kind of a professional standpoint. They are really doing great work at moving the company forward. I just want to commend Crystal and Tammy, and I hope this board is as impressed as I am as they continue to build momentum in ByState Development. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. I don't think it's unprecedented. I think it's good. But I appreciate both of your work together on these issues. They're really critical. Myra, can we have the dates for future meetings?
As noted previously, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February 18th. The next Safety and Security meeting will be held on Thursday, March 10th. And the next Operations and Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meetings will be held on Friday, March 18th at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. I need a motion that this committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal, and D10 Audit.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. The Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting has reconvened to open session. Do I have a motion to accept and forward to the Board for approval the draft organizational effectiveness, data integrity audit as presented?
So moved.
Second.
You have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. There's no further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for your time this morning. Enjoy your weekend.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.